All right, well, good morning, everyone. Glad we have so many special guests with us today. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, meet of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all here. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward Paul Bastiot, our Denton County Veteran Service Officer. He will lead us in our invocation. And in following Paul, we will have our pledges led by our Denton County Women Veterans. And if you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Please pray with me today. Dear Lord, today, Wednesday, and always, we honor our female veterans, women who gave their best when they were called upon to serve or protect their country. We pray that you will bless them for their unselfish service in the continual struggle to preserve our freedoms, our safety, and our country's heritage for all of us. God, we pray, women veterans everywhere, will find sources of consolation to facilitate healing for the visible and the invisible wounds. And we pray you will provide continuous protection and spiritual strength to the women currently serving. To the women veterans who continue to inspire future generation of women service members, thank you for your service. Father, we also pray that you would soften our hearts to our elderly neighbors, that you would stir us to love them both in word and deed. Spirit, move us toward action, help us to slow down, to take the time to offer care and assistance to our elderly neighbors for whom daily life can become a struggle. We also pray for the I-Double-O-F, for their promotion of the principles of friendship, love, truth, faith, hope, charity, and universal justice for all. They help make the world a better place to live by aiding each other, the community, the less fortunate, the youth, and the elderly. May we all live by the golden rule and trust in you, oh Lord. Be with us today in this courtroom as always. Bless our elected officials, and may we serve you well with the actions of this court. Watch over us and grant us peace. In his precious name I pray. Amen.
Women veterans, please come forward.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I'd like to go to item one, which is our public comment forums, and we have one individual registered to speak this morning, and that's Mr. Willie Hutsford. If you'll please come forward. Mr. Hutsford.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. My name is Willie Hutsford. I live at 623 Newton. I'm a...I want to remind you again of some things that I've been seeing. When I went to join the service, it wasn't willingly, I didn't want to go, I didn't really understand it. Fresh out of high school and just living the life, and then I got drafted. But I happened to go to the Air Force before I got drafted, so I didn't go into combat, thank God, I'm glad I didn't. But just young men and women want to be in something, to be a part of something. So it turns out the military was a good something for me, and I loved putting on the uniform. And what I want to speak to you about is what today is what I've been just struggling with, and that is, I want to find joy in the world somewhere, in something. I'd like to be a part of something that's good and wholesome and helpful. All of my children were able to grow up with that, and being in a military family, they learn these procedures and the things that you have to do to show that you belong to the organization, that you are honorable. And some of them, only, I just, seven kids, two of them didn't latch on to that, and they didn't, they still need help. And that's what we're here for, to help them. But the mayor of this city, who's my son, he surprised me the most. I remember that little rascal when he was seven years old, I didn't think there was any hope for him. And now he's teaching me something. They are, there is an individual who is on that, on the city council that, he doesn't stand for the pledge. I don't understand that. I can't, I can't. I don't have a category for that.
Right.
Because I'm military, and I know what that's all about.
That's right.
And you should represent, you should represent us with a better light than that. I'm Christian, and all that means is there is a belief that we have that you should honor. And I was talking about being happy. My little five-year-old gave her...
Mr. Hutsford, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Go ahead and finish your, briefly finish your thought, please, sir.
I just want you to see this little darling right now. Of course, I'm the grandfather, so my daughter is the best granddaughter you could have. But she's five years old, and Sister Mitchell, I know you appreciate this more than some. She accepted Jesus Christ, and that's my little darling right there. She did it? She did it on her own, and...
Can we see it?
Did you all see it?
Yeah.
Show you this little daughter. She's the best granddaughter in the world.
Oh, good for her.
And she drew a picture of her conversion. It's just, it gives me hope.
No, that's great.
Gives me hope.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's her picture of her, her salvation, her grandmother had her do that. This blesses my heart more than you might know.
Well, that's a very good announcement, and thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you voice?
Just hold it, press it, hold it, Diane, push the button, Jesus. Just push the button.
I did last night. Thank you, thank you. Gerard was at a presentation that I did last night out at Ropesin Ranch. He was representing the city of Denton, which is where Ropesin is, and he was great. Everybody loves him. I cannot believe that he was a rascally little boy. One thing he did forget to tell last night was that a certain road that I was planning to use this morning to get to court was closed by the city of Denton, so it did make me a little late. But he's a great mayor, we love him, and thank you for raising this good man.
All right, thank you.
Well, let's go to, let's go to item 3A. This is approval of a proclamation recognizing June the 12th as Women Veterans Day in Denton County and any appropriate action. And I'd like to welcome Paul forward, our Denton County Veteran Service Officer. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. The proclamation does recognize our women veterans, our women veterans of Denton County. I am very proud to be the Veteran Service Officer and also have on staff our women veterans as well. But within our community of Denton County employees, we have women veterans serving, and I think it's just a wonderful opportunity to recognize their service to our country, their service to our freedom, and the fact that they are employed with Denton County and working for the county as well. So I think this is just a wonderful opportunity with the proclamation, and I want to give a lot of accolades to the person that actually put all this together. I seem to get the praise oftentimes, but it's Liz Emerson. Liz, would you please stand? Liz is our lead veteran community navigator. She has a heart for veterans, whether it's a woman veteran or a male veteran. She is our lead navigator. She's been with our program now for five years, and she herself is not a veteran, but she serves veterans, she serves them proudly. And she too has been recognized by the Quilts of Valor in the ceremony that was held this Saturday. So I would like to turn it over now to Commissioners Court for the proclamation, and then we have some quilts of honor that will be presented by Barbara Angel and her team to recognize these women veterans today. So thank you, Judge, appreciate it.
Perfect, good. I would like to mention our roster here. We have Stella, and I'll call them forward here, and if there's anyone that's not on this list, at the end, y'all feel free to make your way down front. This is Stella Bartlett with the Air Force, and she was on the Denton County VSO. Jill Beatle is with, served in the Army. Dre Brians, Public Health Jail in the Army. Ruth Clark, Constable, Precinct 4, Air Force. Monique Lee Coleman, Adult Probation, the Army. Lindsey Knox, Juvenile Probation, Army Reserves. Lynn Marshall, Juvenile Probation, the Air Force. Dawn Mercer, VA Nurse with the Navy. Jennifer Paddock, previous Denton County, with the Army. Nikki Perez, VSO, the Navy. Bonnie Putnam, the Sheriff's Office, the Navy. Mary Rodriguez, VSO, the Air Force. Adriana Vadel, Public Health, Air Force. Mandy Williams, Probate Court 1, the Air Force. And then Commissioner Edmondson had invited a few guests, Irene Manning with the Air Force, Cindy Statton with the Navy, Josie Duggan, the Navy Reserves. So if there's anyone that was not on that list and you qualify, if you're one of our women veterans, please make your way forward, we'd love to include you. Any, any women veterans with us? All right, let's give all these women a hand. Yes. We are not done. We got to, y'all, ladies, stay right there, we're going to read this proclamation, and we have some presentations. This is a court proclamation recognizing Women's Veterans Day. Whereas Texas salutes and remembers many American female veterans who have courageously and honorably served in the military on behalf of our nation. And whereas women have formerly been a part of the United States Armed Forces since the inception of the Army Nurse Corps in 1901, and have proudly served alongside and supported our nation's military since the American Revolution. Whereas the women veterans community is the fastest-growing subset of American veterans. In Texas, women comprise over 12% of the veteran population, and this is increasing yearly. And whereas the Denton County Veteran Service Office assists women veterans with benefits, and the veteran community navigators help women veterans navigate crisis or hard times. And whereas on June the 9th, 2017, Greg Abbott, Governor of Texas, signed Senate Bill 805, declaring that June the 12th be celebrated as Women's Veterans Day so that all Texans recognize the role of women in the military and commemorate the sacrifices of and the valor displayed by Texas women veterans. And whereas on this day, Denton County commemorates the fearless service of women who have served our nation in the armed forces, and we honor our female veterans and their families for their remarkable sacrifices and outstanding contributions to our country. And now therefore, it be resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, proclaims June the 12th, 2024, as Women Veterans Day in Denton County, and encourages all residents to recognize and the courage and contributions of American servicewomen and their families who have proudly served our great state and nation by doing their part to protect our land, people, freedoms, and legacy. Done in open court this 11th day of June, 2024, upon a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? Well, I just wanted to say that we had a great breakfast this morning, and Commissioners Court was able to, on behalf of the county government, express our appreciation to these women and those present and those not present with us at this time. And so we want to, we want to thank them for all their courage and answering, as I say so many times, answering the call to public service, and service beyond themselves. And I would like to, I would also like to mention Bianca, who's with our County Clerk's Office. She's not with us today, she's actually overseas with part of the deployment and exercise, and she, she actually came back and filled in for her boss. So we have a very key member of our Denton County family who's, who's active service and is actually not with us today because she's serving, and so we appreciate her, her service to the country. As well, members, do you have anything to say, or do we want to proceed? Are y'all good? Ladies? All right. Okay, Paul, do we have our presentations for them?
Actually...
Let's just go ahead and do it.
Yes, at this time, bring forward the Quilts of Valor, Barbara Angel. She's going to make presentation for quilts for several of our veterans. Now, some of the veterans here have already been quilted.
All right.
So nonetheless, they won't be quilted again.
I like that verb, quilted.
But the ones that have not been will be quilted at this time. Barbara, if you would, please, son.
I think too, I have a couple people that are not on my list, but that's okay, I have quilts. We will get to you. We're already making a list for the next time, so, including our active-duty person.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm Barbara Angel, I'm with a national organization called Quilts of Valor. The purpose of Quilts of Valor is to thank those who are on active duty or who are veterans to thank them for their service and sacrifice. We are a group in Denton called Red, White, and Blue Bee. There's 29 of us, and we sew, we're a little bigger group than most. We sew at the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter Post in Aubrey. We have to endure sewing in a restored 1913 schoolhouse, but it's rough, but we manage. So we meet twice a month, and we make quilts, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to thank all our vets, and today is especially just amazing. I've been doing this for five years, and I think I have more female vets in front of me today than I have seen total in the last five years. You all are out there doing your thing, taking care of people, being veterans, but you don't wear those baseball hats in the Walmart parking lot, and you're hard to find, and we are delighted. You have no idea how excited, well, I think you have figured out how excited I am. So without further ado, what we're going to do is, we're going to call by name the person who is to get the quilt. We ask that you stand there with the quilt, and I have two gentlemen here that are going to help us hold the quilt, and then the photographer can take a picture of you with your quilt, and then we'll have your quilt, and you move to one side, and another quilt will come up. We have 10 today, so if we don't move it along, we'll be here till lunchtime. So anyway, we are just thrilled. So without further ado, because she has to leave, Mandy Williams?
Beautiful. Wow.
Oh, look at the Statue of Liberty.
No, no, there we go.
Eric could get it.
There we go. Where would you like them to stand? Is this fine, so you can, you want to move over? So we want to get the Statue of Liberty too. When we call it quilting, actually, that's the part we do, it's called wrapping. And then you get a hug, and then I start crying, and then we say, welcome home. Ruth Clark?
Turn it so Eric can get it.
I worked with Ms. Clark for five years and had no idea. Yeah, now she never said a thing.
I had no idea if you didn't. How are you?
I had no idea. Sure enough.
Jill Beatle? Oh, we've got his number, don't worry. I want a flag nailed with Vet Court. Oh my goodness.
Dawn Mercer?
We have, we have guidelines which some people follow and others don't. We awarded one at Vet Court the other day that was like 94 inches long, but the vet was six foot four, so. All of these have their name on it, their branch of service, and their dates of service. And it says Quilts of Valor, Denton County, Commissioners Court. This was made by one of our members who has a son who's a Marine, so. We have a variety of members sewing with us. Some are veterans themselves. We have two Gold Star families. Lynn Marshall? It turns out Ms. Marshall lives two doors down from me. I did not know she was a veteran. Need I say more, ladies? I'm going to go sit down because they don't have one for me. I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
Oh, man, that is pretty.
Lindsey Knox? If you've already received your film, you won't. And then I'm going to come up too short because I have two people I didn't know. But that's okay. We're going to get your... It gives me an excuse to come back. Adriana? Adriana. I love the quilting on the back of that one. Yes, do you know Liz?
She works in the VSO.
No, I, I was like, I just...
And then you said, there is a quilt.
No, I have, I had, I only had 10, and they cut it off, so I don't know. She must have had...
Josie Duggan.
No, I didn't get that.
That's okay, that's what I was trying to, don't worry about it.
But I have 72 quilts in the closet. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Barbara, the thanks is all ours, and the red, white, and blue bee, and I'd, go ahead, Paul, and then we'll...
And like I said, they are kind of hard to find. Even Dr. Richardson just said, I didn't know my staff member was a veteran. So again, it's an honor to be able to recognize our women veterans. I want to thank the court for... I want to thank the court for giving us the time to do that today. Bless you all for your support for our office as well as all the veterans of Denton County in our nation. Thank you.
And y'all don't leave. We wanna take a group picture. If you're walking out the back, we wanna, we wanna take a group picture. So, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of our proclamation honoring our women veterans. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll put you in charge.
That's right.
All right, and we already did 3B. Let's go to item 3C, which is approval of proclamation recognizing World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and any appropriate action. And I believe we have Nisa Mohammed who's with us. Nisa, are you here? Good, welcome. Come forward. And April Middlebrooks. And Laura Gutierrez. Good morning. Do y'all wanna make any introductory comments before we do the proclamation?
Yes, thank you.
I know that's a tough act to follow, all the women veterans in quilts. But we're so glad that you're here as well.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner, Judge Ethan, the county commissioners. Thank you so much for having us here. I'm Nisa Mohammed and this is actually Sherri Bullock. She is the program administrator for Denton County for Adult Protective Services. So, we wanna thank you first for proclaiming June as elder abuse, proclaiming June 15th as Elder, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. At Adult Protective Services, we recognize the entire month of June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. As an agency, we investigate abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation of those 65 or older or those with a substantial impairment. We not only investigate, but we also provide services and resources to prevent further maltreatment and to provide resources to intervene if maltreatment is found. The U.S. Census Bureau identifies the year 2034 as the year that individuals 65 years or older will be the largest demographic in the United States. So, that shift in demographic is expected to strongly impact our families and our communities. Older adults, as we know, are vital to contributing members of our society and everyone deserves the right to live free from abuse with neglect and dignity and respect. So, we really thank you for acknowledging June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month and June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And I do have something for each of you.
Perfect.
Not as grand as a quilt, but.
I know, it's a tough act to follow. Thank you, Nisa. Thank you. Good, I'm gonna put that on.
And Sherri is actually handing out information regarding our agency and how to make a report if you do suspect anyone is being abused, neglected, or financially exploited. So, thank you for the consideration.
Perfect. Let me go ahead and read this proclamation. Thank y'all for being here and what you do on a daily basis. This is our proclamation, "Whereas the people who are elderly or have disabilities contribute to the general welfare of Denton County by helping to preserve the customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. Whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. Whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. Whereas Texas, Adult Protective Services and home caseworkers in Denton County have received 1,582 intakes, of which 945 cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were investigated against our elderly Texans and those with disabilities in 2021. Whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. Whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods in suburbia. Whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim June the 15th, 2024 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Denton County. And we urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Done in open court this the 11th day of June 2024 upon a motion made by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Edmonton. I would ask, Nisa, what is the best, what is a good tip for people to, who can they reach out to if they suspect this? What's going on with a loved one or a friend or neighbor?
Yes, so in Denton County, just a little more information. In fiscal year 2023, over 1,700 intakes were received. And like I said, Sherri is the program administrator for the unit that actually manages all of those intakes. And it's a unit of seven?
Yes.
A unit of seven managing 1,700 intakes. In order to report abuse, neglect, or financial exploitation, you can reach out to 1-800-252-5400. Abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation is severely under-reported. Of every one in 10 older adults are abused. And of those, it's believed that 24 reports go unreported or unacknowledged. So, it is imperative that we continue to raise awareness and that's why we really appreciate the acknowledgement today because it's not, without the support of our community partners, Commissioners' Court, law enforcement, first responders, and community at large, we would be unable to provide the services and support to the elderly in the community. So, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect, good. Thank you very well. Very, that's great information. We can include it in our publications that go out. So, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I just wanna thank you all for giving a voice to the people who are, as you say, are afraid or can't express the abuse that they're getting. So, thank you for being that voice. And all over Denton County, you hear about the elderly being abused everywhere. And whether it's in nursing homes, condolece homes, or even in their homes, their own homes, or their family homes. And I'm so glad that you all have a voice and I'm so glad we're getting this information out to people who don't know that they can call someone.
Yes.
And report this. Thank you for all that you do. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And just to let you know that their reports are confidential. We work with the client and we don't disperse their information. Just to provide services, we share information. But that is a confidential report. So, people can feel free to make a report to Adult Protective Services so that people can get the assistance that they need. And we do provide resources. We are not just trying to remove people from their homes. We want them to stay safely and independently in the community as long as possible.
So, do we have a place if you remove them from their home? That they can, you say you had resources that you can, we can?
Actually, that's our last resort. The last thing we wanna do is remove them from their homes. And if we do, if that is the most, if we do come to that impasse, then we're going to find a place that's safe. We don't have any specific place. We do work with community partners such as skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities to find the most appropriate placement.
Okay, because, because if they can't.
We don't even like to say that because people they don't wanna call us because they think we wanna take them out of their homes.
Right, yeah, okay. Because sometime people don't wanna be moved out of their home, but that may be the best thing for them to be moved.
Yeah, it could be. And if it comes to that, we do work with skilled nursing facilities and assisted living facilities in order to facilitate that.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Okay, one, two. Thank you.
All right. All right, I'll, next is item 3D. This is a, and Connie, if you wanna come on up. This is an approval of a court proclamation commemorating the 165th anniversary of the, and that's a long time, the Denton Odd Fellow Lodge Number 82. And Connie, welcome. And you wanna introduce your guest with you as well?
Billy Bob, we call him Billy Bob. He's a member of our lodge. He is a past Nobel Grand. I'm a past Grand Master of the State of Texas. Yes, our lodge has been here in the city and Denton County for 165 years. I am not a charter member, but. I've been accused of that, but I've only got 40 years in.
Is that all?
So, 40 years, it went by pretty fast for me, it seems. But a lot of people do not know a lot about the Odd Fellows. And it was really started in England, was brought over here. But we do a lot for the community. That's what we're set up to do. Help our community any way we can. So, we've got a good group. I'll say one thing, the mayor of this city of Denton is an odd fellow. We keep him so well. It's ironic that there's been, really and truly, there's been, I'm mistaken, right? There's been four sheriffs of this county, four mayors, two chiefs of police, and one county judge.
Oh, wow.
Have been in this organization at one time when it was started.
That's neat.
Our lodge is like a history book. More than welcome to come out and visit our lodge and see who was in the order when it was started. Merchants, bankers, lawyers, we had a lot of, a lot of people participate in our lodge. So, I'm, like I say, I'm very proud of the organization and what we do. I'm proud of the members. Also, I'm proud of this county because I was born and raised here. And I'm very proud of this county. So, I appreciate y'all letting us about the proclamation.
Absolutely. Well, we're glad to thank y'all for what y'all do in the fabric and community here in the county. We're excited to have y'all here. I will make an announcement that y'all have a, on Saturday, June the 22nd, from 1:00 to 4:00, y'all are gonna be celebrating the 165 years of serving the community of Denton at 1415 Eden Lane. And y'all, y'all having a celebration there. Do you wanna talk about that?
Yes, the lodge will be open for visit, visit with everybody. Get to know some of the members, like I say. Get to see the, some of the pictures and stuff that are in our lodge. I think you'd be very surprised. I did do a tour about two or three weeks ago with a group and there was one lady come up to me and she said, "I gotta ask you a question about a picture y'all have here in the lodge." And I knew which one she was talking about, so I walked over there to it and I said, "Yeah, it's Otis G. Welch." She says, "Yeah, but under it, it says, 'Father of Denton.'" I said, "Yes, ma'am. He's one of the laid out where the courthouse is now and some of the streets." And Welch Street over in the UNT is named after him.
Oh, yeah.
So, there is a lot of pictures that people kinda wonder how we got them, but that goes on with our history.
That's neat. That's neat. All right, we'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is recognizing the Denton Odd Fellows Lodge Number 82 for 165 years of service. Whereas the independent order of Odd Fellows, the IOOF, is a fraternal organization that started in London, England in 1748 and came to America in 1819, reaching the Denton community in 1859 as Denton Odd Fellow Lodge Number 82. Whereas the IOOF's motto, "A friendship, love, and truth forges the group's mission to promote the character of mankind by visiting the sick, relieving the distress, burying the dead, and educating the orphaned." And whereas Lodge Number 82 supports our community by providing visual assistance programs, bestowing local educational scholarships, participating in the U.S. Marine Corps Annual Toys for Tots, sponsoring Little League baseball games, assisting in local drives such as ones for school supplies for local schools and many other projects. And whereas Lodge Number 82 donates to the Salvation Army, the Arthritis Foundation, local food banks, Cumberland Youth and Family Services, and honors the military, local law enforcement, firefighters, and veterans. Whereas Lodge Number 82 has embodied the motto and mission of the IOFF to the betterment of the community, Denton community through significant philanthropic endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby recognize the Denton Odd Fellow Lodge Number 82 for 165 years of service, education, and care and call upon all citizens to recognize and honor them in the same way. Done in open court this the 11th day of June 2024 upon a motion made by?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Connie, I'm so appreciative of y'all coming forward and what a great, rich legacy y'all have here in the county. And it's, it's important that we preserve that history and that we acknowledge it in a meaningful way. So, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
And hopefully this awareness will bring y'all some additional members to keep the legacy going for another 165 years.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? We have a motion, a second, any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
One, two.
Diane?
You bet I.
I love it.
All right. Let's go back to item two, which is our consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull? Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moved to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of the order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2B is approval of intra-departmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of budget amendment request 101530 for public facilities to transfer $10,000 from facilities management, electrical supplies to vehicle care to provide additional funding needed for repairs of older fleet vehicles in the remainder of the fiscal year. Item 2D is approval of budget amendment request 101540 for public facilities to transfer $20,000 from facilities management, mulch to HVAC supplies, and $20,000 from facilities management landscape expenses to HVAC supplies for a total transfer of $40,000 to provide additional funding for HVAC supplies and repairs for the remainder of the fiscal year. Item 2E is approval of budget amendment request 101550 for the Department of Transportation and Engineering to transfer $15,000 from surveys, titles, and testings to signage, and $1,400 from training and education expense to administrative equipment for a total transfer amount of $16,400. The funds are needed to cover a shortage and cover the cost of the remainder of the fiscal year for signage and to purchase four televisions and mounts for the conference room. Item 2F is approval of budget amendment request 101600 for the purchasing department to transfer $380 from law and reference books to dues and subscriptions to fund additional professional memberships for department employees, and $1,020 for administrative supplies to administrative equipment to fund additional conference room furniture in a total transfer of $1,400 in any appropriate action. Item 2G is approval of the June 18th, 2024 payroll. At this time, I'd like to welcome up our Director of Emergency Management, Samantha Taylor, who is going to give us an update and briefing under item, let me see here, she's coming up. Item 13A, 13A is discussion and possible action related to the disaster declaration and executive order EO 240528 for severe weather and any appropriate action. Good morning, Samantha.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for having me here today. And just a quick update, we wrapped up our multi-agency resource center over at the Butterfield Elementary for Sanger ISD. We had about 37 residents who came in and sought resources. While that might not be much, but remember, we do have 76 completely destroyed homes. So, those residents who did come were in much need. So, we're very thankful for our volunteer agencies who did help, you know, staff the MRC and the United Way of Denton County to help get those funds generated. So, we did have FEMA across the hall with our disaster recovery center. They were processing applications for those who came in seeking resources in any unmet needs. Our local volunteers were there to assist and help bridge that gap. I do have FEMA here today and Texas Division of Emergency Management to provide updates on the DRC and our self-reporting damage assessment tool. We do have Sally and Danny here today. If you want to brief up on what you've been seeing on the application side, where we at on helping assisting individuals within Denton County for the May 25th storms and 27th.
Perfect. And I will say that if you're watching this meeting, I know we have a lot of viewers at home, we will put a link below for the United Way where you, if you want to donate to the United Way to provide some assistance, we will put that in the comments below in this, in this video. So, you can have an easy link there for the United Way wherever you can. We've already raised over $40,000 for the United Way, through the United Way, for people giving personally for direct relief for some of these people. So, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. We saw you all last week. Thank you for allowing us to be here. FEMA currently is helping over 44,000 residents of Texas to date with over $90.8 million has been approved and dispersed into the, into the state. In Denton County alone, we have 14,000, I mean, 1,452 registrations. And with that, a total of $691,000 has been distributed to Denton County itself. We have a DRC that's opened at the Butterfield Elementary School in Sanger, and they are currently seeing residents there. We were co-located with the Mark, and we have invited any other volunteers that would like to come in and be co-located in our disaster recovery center there as well. They're welcome to come in. FEMA has a DSA team conducting outreach door-to-door to residents, FBOs, CBOs, and private businesses. And also located in the DRC, we have Small Business Administration is there to help with any, anyone that would like to apply. That's available to residents, homeowners, renters. It's available to anyone in the company, in the county, not just business owners. We also have FEMA mitigation, community education outreach people that will be there, and they're to speak to visitors regarding mitigation efforts. And mitigation efforts can save an average of approximately $6 for every $1 spent to reduce risk and disaster losses. And if you have any questions?
Members, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you for that great update. Thank you.
We have our new CIOLO, Lexi, and we'll give her-
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. So, for our individual State of Texas assessment tool, we have a total of 295 submissions from Denton County. We have 34 destroyed, 42 major, 70 minor, and 138 affected. The iStat tool, it helps officials determine resource needs and learns about the, learn about the type of damage widespread. iStat can be filled out for damages by those residents at damage.tetum.texas.gov.
Okay, perfect. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all. So, we're trying to wrap up our operations here in our office as we transition from response to immediate recovery. Since the closing of the multi-agency resource center, we are still available to help our community with any unmet needs. We did receive several inquiries about storms, storm shelters, and rebate programs. We're actively looking for grants for that. Unfortunately, we don't have any federal funding at this time, but we will be keeping an eye out for future and then let the public know and kind of get away, kind of get a general idea of how many safe rooms that we should be applying for. So, that will be coming up in the future. But during that, just a quick update on the disaster. So, the disaster period, like we talked about in the last Commissioners Court, started from April 26th, even though our events started May 25th. The period has closed for June 5th. So, we'll wrap up our operations here and just continue to sport on a day-to-day basis. So, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer any.
Members, do you have any questions of Samantha or Emergency Management?
No, thank you. You guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I want to-
Okay, I'll follow up on that. Thank you all.
I want to publicly thank Samantha, I want to thank you and our entire department and all the partners that, that are nonprofit partners that have come to, to assist of our Denton County residents and the Denton County departments. You know, the sheriff is here, and I appreciate his, the night of the incident, his staff going out, working through the night. And obviously, our Emergency Management Department was there, Roden Bridge was out removing trees from debris. Brad and his team, the Fire Marshal's Office was out, Jody was out working the scene. I know there's other departments I'm leaving off, but it's amazing to see how our county comes together with a long, rich history of that, of everyone chipping in. We've gone through quite some emergencies over the last few years, and you can define those in many different ways. But one thing that remains constant is the way that our county comes together. And the officials come together, the departments come together, the cities in the county work together, the state, the feds, you know, I, we had direct outreach to me from the White House, the Governor's Office, the Governor directly, the Lieutenant Governor, our members of the legislature, you know, our cities and so on, I mean, that were all just a phone call away, and they were offering their direct assistance. And so, I want to publicly express our appreciation. It's amazing. I went up last week to the, to the elementary school, and to see the complete devastation of some lives, the loss of loved ones and of property. Thank goodness, Denton County, we had loss of property primarily. But to visit with a lady, and I'll always remember that, you know, she lost her husband, and her son's gravely ill, and other sons hurt, and the house is gone. And so, it's amazing, the ministry opportunities I always talk about that we have in this business, and the fact that our, we had volunteers from Catholic Charities and Legal Aid of North Texas, and you know, the Red Cross was there. And it redeems my hope and humanity, you know, to see our partners come together. And so, I would just, if you're watching this, you know, you may not be in need, but it's always a good time to, to have a charitable spirit and support our local nonprofits. Because our United Way of Denton County was great. You know, Gary and his team offered assistance from the beginning. And so, they were always a good partner. And so, just want to thank, thank all of them. I want to thank Dawn and her team for their communications throughout the incident and their recovery. So, thank you, Dawn, for all y'all. Y'all are a key part of our, all of our efforts in communicating things out. So, I just want to, on behalf of the million residents, Samantha, I want to thank y'all for everything y'all do. So, and Tetum, you know, obviously Tetum and all their good efforts. So, all right, I believe there's no action besides that update today, that we won't be, no action. Let's go back to, I'm trying to skip around for people in case Michelle needs to leave. Let's do, let's do the 7A, which is approval of budget amendment request 101520 for the Tax Assessor Collector Office to transfer $32,000 from tax statements to technology software services to purchase additional RT Lawrence Rapid Processing Software modules for better tracking, archiving payments, and virtual statements to ensure optimal performance and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go back to item 5A, approval of bill report payments from CSOD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Good morning.
Morning. There are no changes this week. Recommend to approve as presented.
Perfect. All right, do we, thank you. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 6A is approval of purchase of three Cisco Nexus dashboard nodes and licensing from Presidio Holdings Incorporated, and approved reseller of Cisco Systems in the amount of $175,312.1 through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contract, pardon me, DIRTSO 4167. Do we have a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6B, approval of evaluations committees recommendation to rank Alliance Geotechnical Group as the most qualified firm for the Charlie Colchilla replacement under RFPQ 202619, material testing services, building construction.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6C, approve renewal of bid 222694 tire rubber modified asphalt to Rose Contracting.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6D, approval award of ITV 242815 Copper Canyon Road Drainage Repair to AMS Land Company LLC. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Thanks.
Do you want to hold it?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay.
I have to do it now, Tina. You can do it later, baby.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I had the same question. 6C, approval of evaluation committees recommendation to rank Coram Architects Incorporated as the most qualified firm, RFSQ 242807, architectural services for the horn building, entry door remodel, and any appropriate action. That might be when Michelle's here. We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7B, and we're going to pull that one. So, we'll pull that one. No action today for 7B, Ashley. So, item 7C is approval of the budget amendment request 101570 for the county jail to transfer $415,400 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and human resources policies as recommended by the budget office, and $41,000 of out-of-county prisoner expense for a total transfer of $456,400. Funds are needed due to a shortage of detention officers and to cover the cost of inmates housed at various jails for the month of May. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Yes. Sheriff, do you see any end in to this? I know I put you on the spot, but I saw you sitting back there, so I thought I'd ask. I got you.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
You do, okay.
And we, uh-
Because we're running out of money this year.
Is that the end? No money?
We, we, you know, there's good news, and you know, we are currently, you know, when this fiasco really began with our staffing, we're around 30%. We're around 54 now, so we've made significant improvement.
Yay.
We've kind of hit a area where we've kind of been stagnant for a moment, but we are continuing to get applicants. We are pushing them through. We've pulled a lot of these inmates out of a lot of these jails because we're able to open up more pods because of our staffing, and that's alleviated some of this. I was talking with my staff this week. We are really close to getting these folks on what we call the true 12-hour shifts, which means basically four days on, three days off. That would alleviate, that will alleviate a lot of the overtime when we're able to do that. And it's a great recruiting tool as well. When you get three days off a week and then work four days, that's, that's our goal. We're getting closer. We are, one of the reasons for the overtime as well is we're giving some of these folks that have been there a long time without being able to take their comp time and their vacation and things of that nature, we're giving them that time off. So, there's really three factors that lead into the amount of money we're spending. The, it's not just the staffing issue with detention officers, it's also, you know, housing outside.
Right.
And as you guys know, for several years, we've had to go back and pay a lot of these folks for their comp time and vacation time and things that they've lost because it was, you know, out of their control. So, we're alleviating two of those right now by pulling people out of the jails and also giving people their time off so we don't run into them losing their time and us having to compensate them. And we're getting really closer on the third one as far as staffing to be able to go to the true 12-hour shifts and be able to man the jail as mandated by the jail commission. And so, yes, there is an end in sight. We're getting closer to that. It's, you know, as we talked about before, it's a slow process. We didn't get in this mess overnight. We're not going to come out of it overnight, but we are making progress.
Okay. Thank you for that report. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff. Y'all have good efforts on all that. I know it's tough times. 7D is approval of budget amendment request 101580 to reallocate $40,000 from the general fund balance- general fund balance revenues collected from fees to assist defendants with counseling tests and other services in the Drug Court Program DWI Court and the County Criminal Court Number Five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E, approval of budget amendment request one zero one five nine zero for the Sheriff's Office to transfer within the courthouse security forty six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from unappropriated contingency to Capitol Equipment to cover the cost of a radio signal booster needed for the Frisco Government Center and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of setting the fee for the twenty twenty four tax collection contracts with other taxing entities at a rate of one dollar per parcel and any appropriate action. The Chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight A, a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the county clerk, one promotion in the district attorney's office, two new hires in U N R probation, five new hires in the sheriff's office, all of them are detention officer ones, one new hire in the tax office, and one promotion in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Perfect. Good. Thank you. Again, I remind everybody that it's presented for recording purposes only. Just a second. All right. Let's go to item nine A, approval of the Department of State Health Services Dishes of Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Tuberculosis Prevention and Control Combined State and Federal Grant Program in the amount of two hundred and seventy three thousand two hundred and thirty five dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty five. This is September the first twenty twenty four through the August thirty first twenty twenty five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A, approval of the Lake Geneva Estates Final Plaid. This is lots one X and and two and four dash three one. This is block A, lots one, two X, three through thirteen, fourteen X, and fifteen through thirteen, block B. And this is one hundred and fifty eight acre, one hundred and fifty eight point four two three acres. This is located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jody, do we need to, that's where next address is thirteen A again. Do we need to do anything on that? Yeah, okay, we're good, okay. Yeah, excuse me. Let's go to thirteen B, approval of submission to fiscal year twenty twenty five. This is year four of the Texas Indigent Defense Commission, the I TIDC Indigent Defense Improvement Grant Award, grant ID one one six two in amount of sixty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty two dollars and forty cents and any appropriate action. We do have Judge Ramsay here. Judge, did you want to speak, or do we, or do we need to just take action? Would you like to, you're here, I'd like to give you the opportunity, please sir. We appreciate you being here and for what you do. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, for once, I don't have a whole lot to say. Other than I think we've made some real progress. I think we've certainly added a layer. I, my personal opinion is that we have become far better at assessing those who really need court appointing counsel from those who don't. We have an active process of verifying certain information with defendants who are asking for court appointing counsel. We didn't always have it available to us. So I think that we are giving to those who really need them, but I think we're doing a better job at not giving to those who who would not really qualify. So I think we've done a good job on that. We have, I think we're appropriately staffed, and I think most of courts are quite supportive, and we've taken over a process. It also creates a little bit of a buffer, so the judges aren't having face to face conversations with defendants in courts. And so I think that's been a benefit to us too as well. So I think it made great progress.
You've already, you've done a great job with that department.
I thank you.
I just, I mean, you really have, kind of setting it up and everything you've done with it. It's just, you've done a really good job, Judge. Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
All, do we have a motion? Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's good to have you back, Ashley. Fourteen A, approval of the first renewal of the agreement for the Alternative Dispute Resolution Service between Denton County, Texas and the Denton County Alternative Dispute Resolution Program, decap in the amount of one hundred and forty four thousand of funding to come for mediation services. Order line item zero one five three nine eight two zero zero five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to item sixteen A, appointment of a Steering and User Group Committee for the Preservation Restoration of the Historic Courthouse on the Square. The Steering Committee consists to consist of Judge Andy Eads, Dwayne Snyder, Dale Nelson, Kevin Carr, Scott Arledge, Alejandro Moreno, Peggy Riddle, User Group, Dwayne Committee of Dwayne Snyder, Dale Nelson, Damian Van Zyle, Holly Sidlosky, Peggy Riddle, Rosalind Shelton, Brooke Rose. And the Chair will move for approval, and I'd like to add to the committee Commissioner Kevin Falconer. That would be my, that'd be my motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is sixteen B, approval of request to hold a public hearing at nine AM on July twenty third, twenty twenty four to discuss one, approval of the Denton County Clerk's Record Archive Plan Two, approval of the continued collection of the ten dollar preservation and restoration fee by the county clerk, three advertised notice of the of the public hearing and the local newspaper and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item seventeen as community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you Judge. I have a couple of things. Obviously, after all the devastating weather, we still have quite a few animals that need assistance. So obviously, needing adoptions and and some of the animal hospitals need funds. So if you'll either, obviously, A, if you've lost a pet, please work harder than you are right now to find them. And then obviously, any help would would be wonderful in those areas that people that are housing the pets that aren't theirs at this point in time. But next thing, I want to recognize the Ponder School students for coming over and helping out with their cleanup efforts. They, there was over a hundred of them came, and they were bussed over. And I thought that was amazing what they came and did. It is greatly appreciated that you have a local city near you put that type of energy and effort into coming over and helping out with the cleanup, which obviously, we've had tons of volunteers, but I thought that was exceptional for their school to come bring that many young men and women over. So thank you for that. I want to recognize it. And then I want to recognize HR for another great employee appreciation luncheon that we had yesterday. So that's all I've got, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Falconer.
Yes, thank you Judge. Things going on this next week. In Carrollton, we've got Sounds on the Square on the fourteenth at six o'clock, and that's in downtown Carrollton. And then there's CPR and AED training on the fifteenth at six o'clock, and that's at the Carrollton Fire Administration Building. And then in Crossroads, there's Crossroads Summer Market on the fifteenth at eight, from eight to eleven. That's at Crossroads Park. And then Art in the Park also on the fifteenth from nine to eleven. And then in Frisco, there's Work Day Wednesday at the Frisco's Common Park, and that's eight to nine on the twelfth. That's all I've got.
Perfect. All right, Commissioner Mitchell.
I have in Loudoun, a sensory friendly water park day, June fourteenth, nine thirty to eleven, nine thirty to eleven thirty AM at the CAC. And in Corinth, today, annual, third annual Discovera Lake Cities. We're going to join the four mayors on a bus tour around Lake Cities. Then on June twelfth, I have the Lake Cities Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, eleven thirty to one. Also, Lake Cities Chamber will be celebrating their fiftieth anniversary on June seventeenth through the twentieth. Trade Days in Lake Cities is June fifteenth. We have the Sounds of Louisville on June eleventh at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Then we have the Quilt, a living history of African American music on June thirteenth at the Louisville Grand Theater. And we have a Juneteenth Celebration Concert on June fourteenth, six PM to ten PM at Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Please govern yourself accordingly.
Commissioner Edmondson.
Yeah, I just had to be called on. I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Bobby. After hearing about Elder Abuse Month, I think it's really interesting. We've got a couple of elder events going on in Precinct Four that are not going to abuse the elders, but are definitely going to give them a good time. The first one's in Argyle, the Golden Age's Lual Luncheon, and that's going to be on the thirteenth from eleven to one. They're asking that you RSVP at the Town of Argyle website. And then in Denton, there's a Juneteenth Picnic for ages fifty plus at the American Legion Hall. So both of these are for elders, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and there will be no abuse there. And then at Trophy Club, as you know, their mayor is named Tiffany, and so they're going to have breakfast with Tiffany. That may recall for us older people, a film.
A great movie.
That we have seen. It was a great movie. And so anyway, this is going to be connecting with the mayor and find out what's going on in Trophy Club, and all Trophy Club folks are invited.
Perfect. I do want to mention some, that we will not have court on Tuesday, June eighteenth, as it's adjacent to our county holiday. So we want to make that notification. And then we've got some free music, outdoor music opportunities on the Thursday, June the thirteenth, Twilight Tunes, it's free at the Denton Courthouse on the Square. And this is the thirty first year of this music series. And also on Thursday, some of the Sounds of Music Concert Series at the Shops of Highland Village. And then there's also at the Grandscape on the same evening at eight o'clock. And then the fourteenth on Friday, Lakeside Music Series in Flowerman. So had some great time. I don't think, do we have anything else to report? Any, any updates? Okay. All right, let's go to Executive Session, and it is fifteen A, the Texas Government Code five five one zero seven one one A, consultation with attorney in a closed meeting when the governmental body seeks the advice of the attorney about pending or contemplated litigation in case number two 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 seven two six two one one style, John Tillman Milsteed in Denton County, Texas, Denton County Sheriff's Office and Tracy Murphy and his official and individual capacity in the two hundredth and eleventh District Court in Denton County, Texas. And fifteen B, the Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of deliberation in open media would have a detrimental effect on the position of governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And it is ten twenty two, and we're in Executive Session.